Bowling Green Warren County Planning Commission into order for our November 3rd meeting. McKenna, would you please call the roll?
Commissioner Drain. Commissioner Gay.
Ma'am.
Commissioner Graham.
Yes ma'am.
Commissioner Vitale.
Yes ma'am.
Commissioner Volker.
Yes ma'am.
And Chair Warren.
Yes ma'am. Commissioners, you have the minutes of our October 20th meeting, October 20th, 2022. Are there any questions? Hearing none, I'm going to call for a motion, please.
No move.
Second.
Chair Volker.
Yes ma'am.
Commissioner Drain.
Yes ma'am.
Commissioner Gay.
Stain.
Commissioner Graham.
Stain.
And Chair Warren.
Yes ma'am, thank you very much, McKenna.
Sorry, Commissioner Vitale.
Yes ma'am.
Okay, we now enter into our public hearing. Mr. Moore, if you would administer the oath.
Chair Warren, I request that you order that tonight's record include all statutory and regulatory divisions, the commission's entire file for each application, all tonight's documents, and the qualifications of each staff. Finally, I'd ask that you administer the oath to those witnesses.
You swear to tell the truth?
Yes sir.
Thank you very much. Yes sir, I heard that, okay. Commissioners, you have your subdivision site development plans in your packets. Are there any questions regarding those? Hearing none, we will move into old business. Item number one is 2022-83Z County Bristol Partners LLC and T&amp;N Simon Properties LLC have filed an application to rezone a tract of land containing approximately 35.3 acres, located zero Louisville Road from Ag to RM4 multifamily residential with the general development plan. Ms. Hurt?
Thank you, Chair Warren.
Interrupting a second, Mr. Moore, do we need a motion to remove that from?
Excuse me.
The table first?
Yes, we need that, and then I want to also point out that even though this matter was called for the October 20th meeting, there was no proof taken, and therefore, all of you all may hear and decide tonight's case.
So that includes me, and I, so I'm listening to what happens tonight. Nothing that happened previously is in play here, correct?
That is correct, and the reason for that is that nothing that happened previously, there was nothing that happened previously. All that happened was the case was called and it was passed.
Good, thank you.
If there would be, could be pleased, a motion to remove the, that case from the table and to put it on tonight's document.
No moved.
Commissioner Volker.
Yes ma'am.
Commissioner Drain.
Yes ma'am.
Commissioner Gay.
Yes ma'am.
Commissioner Graham.
Yes ma'am.
And Chair Warren.
Yes ma'am, thank you, ma'am.
Alright, we'll get started. We had a pre-application meeting back in August for the property outlined in yellow on Louisville Road, and the current zoning is Ag with a current use also of Ag. The future land use map is split between mixed-use commercial and high-density residential, and the proposal this evening involves a request to rezone the property to RM4, and I will take full blame for this. There was actually a new set of development plan conditions that was submitted before we sent out the packets, and I forgot to change the unit count. So your staff reports say that the proposal includes 448 units, however, the request is actually for 304 units total, and that reflects what is shown on the concept plan, and that brings the density down to 8.61 dwelling units per acre. Looking on page two, we'll look at our site characteristics review section. Again, the concept is shown on the screen. You can see there are, I believe, 19 buildings total shown on the concept with associated parking and some drainage areas shown. We'll also touch on some pedestrian connections here in just a minute. We'll go back to the land use map real quick, and you'll see in green here, we have Ephraim White Park, and then down here, to the right here, is Bristow Elementary. So there are some pedestrian connections proposed from this development to those facilities. We've also noted in the site characteristics review that a large portion of this property is designated as prime farmland, and we have included a density map for your reference. The existing and approved densities in the area range from 3.34 dwelling units per acre to 17.74 dwelling units per acre, and again, the density with the revised unit count is proposed to be 8.61 dwelling units per acre. Jumping down to open space, the applicants have proposed a minimum of 20% open space, however, I believe they are prepared to increase that from my discussions earlier this afternoon, so I'll let them touch on that here in just a minute. And they have also agreed that the development will include a clubhouse and pool, and that the development will contain internal sidewalks that will provide a pedestrian connection to Bristow Elementary and Ephraim White Park. And again, those are depicted on the attached site plan in your packets and the site plan that's on the screen. Looking at pedestrian, bicycle, and transit facilities, there are no existing bike-ped facilities that serve this area, however, there are bike-ped facilities in the park that is adjacent to this development. The applicants are proposing internal sidewalks and also walking paths that will help to provide pedestrian connections to both Ephraim White and Bristow Elementary. And then the development plan conditions also require, or propose to require, a four-plank fence along property lines common with Ephraim White Park. The county parks director requested that the developer install a six-foot-tall, nine-gauge chain-link fence, and he further indicated that the parks department would allow installation of a three-to-four-foot-wide entrance gate as long as the gates could be locked at night, and the applicants did not agree to these fencing requirements, but instead are proposing the four-plank fence in development plan condition six. Looking at the traffic impact study requirements, the traffic impact study was not required by the Kentucky Transportation Cabinet after they reviewed the proposal. They did impose a requirement that only one entrance be permitted, and they did require that right and left turn lanes would be installed on Louisville Road into the development if this proposal is approved. Looking at the development plan conditions, number one, again, that should be 304, maximum number of dwelling units. Number two, limits building height to two stories. Three outlines building materials. Four requires that the development be under singular ownership and management. Five requires uniform lighting for parking and travel ways, and also requires that the developer maintain healthy and mature trees within 10 feet of the southwestern, northern, and northeastern property lines. Number six outlines amenities that are proposed for the development. Number seven deals with access. Eight requires underground utilities. Nine addresses sinkholes and wetlands, and 10 looks at open space. Under the Focus 2030 category review, there are seven items for you all to weigh in on, the first being LU 1.1.3, which looks at compatibility. Next, LU 2, which looks at preservation of the character of the area. Below that, you'll find LU 2.1.1, which looks at open space. And then down at the bottom, there are four, HN1 and HN1.3, and HN2.1 and HN4, which look at infill development, character and pattern of development, and suitability of the proposed housing type. And with that, I'll go back to page one, and really, our only point to consider was just regarding the fence that's proposed, and just that it's in conflict with what was requested by the county parks director. That is all I have for the staff report, but I'm happy to answer questions.
Thank you, Rachel. Commissioners, any questions for Ms. Hurt?
Rachel, would you repeat the number of units again, three?
304.
304.
You're welcome.
Any other questions, commissioners, for Ms. Hurt?
This may be a question for the applicant, but do we know why the park requested a chain-link fence rather than a four-plank fence?
So, we've had a couple of developments recently that have come before you all where the parks department was not necessarily consulted beforehand, and so after the fact, it was questioned why it wasn't sent to them for their review on the front end, and so we've been trying to make our best effort in doing that. And when I forwarded the plans to the parks director, that's when he had replied and said that moving forward with any development adjacent to a county park, that that's the type of fence that they would like to see.
To your knowledge, are they opposed to another type of fence?
I think, Ben, did you, I'll let you, because you talked to-
I would say they want the chain-link fence to keep people out of the park at night.
I see, okay, so it's more of a security perimeter fence for them, then?
It is security, there's been quite a bit of vandalism and stuff stolen from the parks in various places, but it's mostly for security, and the four-rail fence, they did not, the horse fence, if you will, does not provide the security that they feel they need, especially as properties around them develop, but they were not opposed to another style of security fence. Like a wrought aluminum or something like that, and both the applicant and the parks director were encouraged to speak, but I don't know that that ever happened.
Good, and currently, do they have a fence?
There's not a fence in, if there is, it's just like a wire farm fence that runs along the backside of the park there.
I see, alright, very good, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Graham. Commissioners, any other questions for Ms. Hurt? Thank you, thank you very much. Is the applicant here, or their representative, or whoever's going to speak?
Chris Davenport, 921 College Street, swear to tell the truth. Mike Vitale is with me.
Swear to tell the truth, 1336 Edgewood.
Thank you, gentlemen.
So, as Ben mentioned, I was requested a call, Mr. Coomer, I did that actually before the last hearing, and talked to Chris, and he basically said what Rachel has told you, they prefer the six-foot-tall fence. I know from speaking with my client, Mike, and the development group, frankly, they find that to be kind of prison-esque. I did go out there a few weeks ago so I could try to kind of understand the situation better, and did I go the wrong way? Okay, I'm not looking for the photos yet, I just want to point out the area. So, and the property line that we're talking about is right here. It kind of runs a zigzag, so the park is in the green, okay? And the fencing out there at the park runs the gambit of no fencing in areas, six-foot fencing in areas, like what Mr. Coomer is talking about, which appeared to me to have been installed by the county parks themselves, to four-plank fencing like my client proposed. So, more specifically, these properties here are residential properties where the four-plank fence is in place. You've got that six-foot fencing runs pretty much all around the frontage on basically the opposite side of the park. These areas in parts have just the existing, what I would call fence row in various stages of maintenance, I would say. I don't think that was probably installed by the park, that's probably been there a long time. And then, correct me if I'm wrong, Mike, but I don't believe currently there's any fencing-
No.
-in the back of our property.
I don't believe there is.
Or fencing over here. And so, my client tells me they really don't prefer that style fence because it kind of looks prison-esque. They think that the wood fence is prettier. Functionally, I really don't know what you gain by the six-foot fence when you're talking about this stretch when access can be gained around the fence. I mean, we're not really fencing anything in or out, we're just creating a very small portion of what would be a fencing system if the county wanted it. So, for those reasons, and you know, I don't know for sure, but I kind of assumed the six-foot fence would probably be cheaper than what my client's proposing. That's an assumption.
Chris, y'all talking about putting a six-foot fence around the whole property?
They just want it right here.
No, no, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, the four-plank. Are y'all just talking about doing the four-plank just there?
To basically prevent any type of vehicular access, scooters, that kind of thing. We committed to connecting to both the schools and the park sidewalk pedestrian ways so that people could traverse those and have access to the park. So when it was first mentioned, all it was expressed to me is we need some type of fencing between us and the park. My client proposed the four-plank wood fencing, and that's when the park system came back and said, we'd like to have that to be a six-foot fence, but for the reasons I pointed out, it just didn't make much sense to my client. And I told Mr. Coomer, I said, you know, I mean, obviously, we all know if you wanted that fence on your side of the property, there's nothing my client could do about it. The question is, should my client put it up on their property when I would again argue it won't even functionally do anything at this point?
It's 100% aesthetic. The fence we're proposing will likely cost more money-
Mike, would you come with the microphone?
I'm sorry.
It's being recorded, that's okay, just so everybody can hear.
It's 100% aesthetic. The fence we're proposing will likely cost, will be more expensive. The fence they're proposing is more of a institutional fence, even with the toppings that if somebody tried to scale it, they would be lacerated. We don't think that'd be great for apartment dwelling, and the county is certainly entitled to do that on their side of the property. Some of the contiguous property owners have more of the horse-style fencing on their property, so we're not out of the norm. But again, it's, we just think with, given what we planned for the property, the apartment style buildings will have, that this fence would be more appropriate, more attractive, and I don't think either one is, provides a greater security deterrent for anyone who might trespass.
Thank you, Mike. Mr. Davenport, do you have anything else?
Oh, I think, I commented a couple of weeks ago that I was happy to see some development in that area. We talked about a property down the street, this fits in very nicely. Their density here is quite a bit lower than some of the other developments we've seen up there, particularly when we revised it to the 304. So, I think it's, I would, happy to answer any questions, but I think the report speaks for itself.
Alright, commissioners, any questions for Mr. Davenport or Mr. Vitale?
I mean, once again, like we talked about in meetings, I think it's a good application. I think y'all addressed a lot of things that we talk about on a Thursday night, and I appreciate that. So, real quickly, if I may, I just want to make sure that I understand your argument for the fence. The, if I understand correctly, your assertion is someone could just walk right around that fence and enter the park on either side, correct?
That's correct.
If there's no fence in place currently.
Yeah, it's not a continuous fence.
I see.
You can see here, I don't believe there's any fencing here, and most all, if not all, the fencing on this section is that old fence row I'm talking about.
Fair enough. Thank you.
RC number, I'm sorry, what does the development plan condition say for number six? Does it say four plank or chain link?
Four plank.
Four plank.
Then we did, number one should be 304, and number 10 should be 25% open space. We really haven't talked about that, but when we looked at the revised concept with 304, 25% will not be anywhere even close to hard to meet, we're going to be well above that.
The initial plan was listed at 400 and some odd units, and that's not what we want to build, it's going to be 304 units, so there's plenty of green space.
And by way, comparison, I think the ordinance minimum's 15%.
Alright, thank you, gentlemen. Is there anyone in the audience tonight that has a question regarding this proposal or a comment, please? Alright, hearing none, commissioners, we call for a motion, please.
Make a motion to approve the proposed zoning map amendment together with and conditioned upon a general development plan document number 2022-83Z County based upon a testimony and document presented in this public hearing. Proposed zoning map amendment is consistent with the adopted Focus 2030 comprehensive plan as demonstrated by its compliance with objective and action items presented in the staff report. Therefore, the proposed zoning map amendment is in agreement with the adopted comprehensive plan. Further requests, this motion includes a summary of evidence and testimony presented by the witnesses at this public hearing.
Second.
Commissioner Gay.
Yes ma'am.
Commissioner Graham.
Yes ma'am.
Commissioner Volker.
Yes ma'am.
Commissioner Drain. And Chair Warren.
Yes ma'am, the motion is approved, and will go to Warren County Fiscal Court for final approval. Our next item tonight is 2022-88ZBG Cobblestone Capital LLC and JS and JM LLC owners have filed an application to rezone a portion of a tract of land containing approximately 1.55 acres located at 802-31W bypass from highway business in RM2 two-family residential to highway business with the general development plan.
Amy?
Thank you, Chair. We had a pre-application meeting on March 7th for the property highlighted in yellow. The current zoning is agriculture. Current land use is vacant, and future land use is low-density residential. And the applicants are proposing to rezone in order to create two building lots. The remaining portion of the property is proposed to remain zoned agriculture and will be added to the adjacent property at 111 McGinnis Road. And the applicants have supplied a site plan for you to review. Looking over at the site characteristics review, transportation infrastructure, the property has frontage on Bristow Road and DF Petty Road. Both are county-maintained rural roadways with 50 feet of roadway and approximately 16 feet of pavement width. Looking down at site design and compatibility review, building materials, roughly 60% of the homes in the area have vinyl exterior. The remaining homes are a mix of brick, hardy board, metal, and wood. Building foundations are a mix of poured concrete, brick, stone, plain-faced block, and split-faced block. The applicants did not address the building or foundation materials for the proposed residence. Looking over at the development plan conditions, number one addresses the building orientation. Number two, any new primary residential structure constructed on the property shall contain a minimum of 1,500 square feet of heated and cooled space. Number three addresses the septic system. Number four addresses tree preservation and sinkhole mitigation. Number five addresses access to the property. And number six, the new residences will be constructed to have at least a one-car garage similar to adjoining residences. Looking down at the Focus 2030 category review, staff reviewed 14 items for compliance, and I will highlight three items for your consideration. Looking down, Planning Commission should determine if the proposal is compatible with considerations noted regarding building and foundation materials, and if it complies with LU 1.1.3. The proposal may comply with LU 2, and the Planning Commission should determine if the proposal is a high-quality development that incorporates design standards tailored to protect the surrounding area. Again, the applicant did not specify the building or foundation materials planned for the proposed development. And on page four, the proposal may comply with HN2.1 and HN4. Planning Commission should determine if the proposed development plan and conditions require that any redevelopment be located in a suitable location, and if it would enhance the rate of housing options available in the area. Looking over at the points to consider, the current road width for Bristow Road and DF Petty Road is 16 feet, which is less than the current 18-foot county minimum standard. And again, the applicant did not address building or foundation materials for the proposed residences. So, that is all staff has for staff report, but be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Amy. Commissioners, any questions?
Amy, in your, in your conference, did you, did you have any discussions about building materials with the client?
In pre-application meetings, we always, that's always a topic to discuss with the applicants, but I'm not sure what the final-
If I recall, I think the applicant built the home that's on the lot. If you're looking at the exhibit, I think he said he built the home that's on the lot to the right. And I think he said he planned for these homes to be similar, but just ultimately, what was submitted, we didn't get those materials, so he may be prepared to address that here in a minute.
Commissioners, any other questions? Is the applicant here, or their representative that would like to address this? AM Builders or Alan Miller? Yes, sir. Would you come to the microphone, would you come to the microphone, please, sir? If you would state your name and address, please, sir?
Mike Newkirk, 1457 Bristow Road.
Yes, sir, you swear to tell the truth?
Absolutely.
Thank you, Mr. Newkirk.
Alright. There was a mobile home on that lot, the storm of December, whatever it was, 5th, rolled it up and put it in the ditch, and Alan built my house, and I had less than $2,000 worth of damage aggregate, you know, and around me, people were, you know, it's pretty severe damage, and man builds a very nice house. I talked to the girls who lived there in the trailer, when they told me they're not moving back there, they're going to build a house someplace, I called Alan, told him the ground was going to come up for sale, and he ended up buying it. This, to me, is a no-brainer, I mean, it's a little patch of agriculture between a subdivision and me, you know, so.
So, Mr. Newkirk, are you, what is your relationship to this? Do you own the land?
No, Alan owns the land, he bought it.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm just an interested bystander because I live right next to it.
I got you, okay.
And I would have every confidence he will build a very nice home for us.
Okay, thank, thank you. Just clarification.
Is Alan Miller present tonight?
So, we don't, we do not have the applicant here?
Your options include taking action on the application, or?
Who's spoken?
So would we table? So here's my concern, it sounds as if the applicant would possibly not be opposed to addressing building materials, but I would not be comfortable just passing it in its current form.
We need to just adjourn the hearing, or take action on the application?
Take action on it, they can't bring it back, can they?
Back with the building materials, that's, I mean-
Can't bring it back with-
They just changed the application.
So that, when, what date is that meeting? December the 1st is the meeting, I would prefer, because-
It wouldn't be the 17th.
We have quite a heavy docket there, and, you know, how do I say this? He's the one that didn't show up, and I'd hate to delay more proceedings of that meeting.
So this is probably a question for staff, is there any, is there advantage to doing one or the other? We could, we could take action either way. The problem is, if we table it, and the six of us aren't here, and two of us are missing, you can't hear it. So, my opinion would be, let's take action on it with a denial.
That way they can bring it back, right?
That's right.
Correct. So, am I correct, they would be able to bring it back, or no?
Not for a year.
Yeah, if you deny it, it's a year.
For a year.
But what about they make a material change and add the building?
That's what I thought it was. That's what I thought. It's a proposal for one house unless he changes it to something completely different. I would suggest probably, let's table it. Maybe if he shows up before we get done tonight, we could still hear it, but I would suggest just table it to December first.
So, is that... Are we in agreement? Is that a motion?
Yes. Could the record also reflect whether or not there's anybody here in opposition to the application?
Is anyone here tonight in opposition to this request? Thank you, Hamp. All right, we call for a motion. I think the agreement is to table this to our December... What date? December first meeting.
Make a motion to table it to December.
Commissioner Gay.
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Graham.
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Vitale.
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Volker.
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Drenn and Chair Warren.
Yes, ma'am. Motion has been approved to table it to our December first meeting. I apologize, I read the Cobblestone Capital earlier, and I'm going to reread it again. One and one, got a little mixed up.
Now, Hamp, could he not make him with a statement so he could be his sworn...
Our attorney.
Okay, I mean...
Okay, item number two tonight is twenty-two, eighty-eight ZBG Cobblestone Capital LLC and JS and JM LLC have filed an application to rezone a portion of tract of land containing approximately one point five-five acres located at eight-oh-two thirty-one W bypass from highway business and RM two, two-family residential to highway business with a general development plan. Ms. Hurt.
Thank you, Chair Warren. We had a pre-application meeting back in August for the property you just mentioned, located on the US thirty-one W bypass. The zoning is currently split highway business, and you'll see on the back, there's a little strip of orange, which is RM two. The current use of the property is commercial, and the future land use map is designated as commercial. The proposal involves a request for commercial use. You'll see the site plan here, and the applicant may need to explain a little bit more about the plan for the property, but the proposal includes self-storage. It would be indoor self-storage, so it would look a little different than what you would maybe think of when you hear about... When you hear self-storage, it's a different product, so it's probably best to let the applicant explain that here in just a minute. Looking at the architectural features, we have noted that existing buildings along the US thirty-one W bypass are majority one-story commercial structures, and the proposed development plan conditions allow a maximum building height of four stories. The Planning Commission should determine if a four-story building is appropriate in this location, given the adjacent single-family residential uses to the rear and its impact on the existing character and pattern of development along the bypass. Looking at the development plan conditions on page three, number one outlines proposed building materials. Number two looks at that building height, a max of four stories. Three outlines prohibited uses. Four addresses access to the site. Five deals with building orientation. Six requires screening of roof-level equipment. Seven deals with signage, and eight requires underground utilities. Nine addresses tree preservation. Looking at the Focus 2030 category review, again, there are seven items here, one of those being compatibility, and the Planning Commission should determine if a four-story building is appropriate in this location. LU two on the next page, the Planning Commission should evaluate the impact of a four-story building on the existing character and pattern of development along the bypass. Jumping down to LU two-five, LU two-five-two, HN-one, and HN-one-point-three, the Planning Commission should determine if the proposed four-story development will strengthen or protect nearby historic neighborhoods. And then the bottom policy there, ED-one, which deals with economic development. On page one, a couple of points to consider. Three-story building was discussed during the pre-application meeting, and the original submitted development plan conditions proposed a maximum building height of forty feet. During review of the application, staff noted to the applicants that the existing buildings along this section of the bypass are majorly one-story, commercial structures. And the resubmitted DPCs now propose a maximum building height of four stories. There is no maximum height, at least in terms of feet, proposed in the development plan conditions, only that the building would be four stories, and the Planning Commission should determine if a four-story building is appropriate in this location, again, considering the adjacent family residential uses to the rear and its impact on the character and pattern of development along the bypass. That is all for the staff report, but I'm happy to answer questions.
Thank you. Thank you, Rachel. Commissioners, are there any questions for Ms. Hurt?
So, in your pre-application meeting, you had some conversations about three-story buildings?
That was what was desired by the applicant when they first came to us to discuss this project.
So, when did it move from a three-story to a four-story?
Between when we sent on our email on October nineteenth, when we received our revisions last week in preparation of mailing out your packets for this evening, the revised development plan conditions we received had changed the building height to four stories.
So, Ms. Hurt, in this location, there are no zoning restrictions as far as height, is that correct?
Right, not in the HB zone per the ordinance. There's no height restriction.
Thank you.
Yes.
Commissioners, any other questions for Ms. Hurt?
If we go back to the zoning map, most of the property is already zoned highway business. There's a strip of RM two in the back, so to accommodate their proposal, that would have to be rezoned.
So, were it not for that little strip of residential in the back by right, could they build a four-story building?
Yes.
Okay.
What is the setback?
The setback is forty feet from the rear property line. And if we zoom in, where this property kind of imposes into the single-family lots, so this lot, single-family, so you'd actually have a forty-foot setback from this portion of the side property line, and then also over here, this would have a forty-foot building setback here.
Really, it looks like they're cleaning up. It's not even a setback.
Let me see if I can read that distance. I don't know what that is.
Forty feet.
It's forty feet because there's residential in the back, correct? Is that it?
Right.
Okay.
Yeah, I don't know what that distance is. It's not... Think so.
For you. Okay, Commissioners, any other questions for Ms. Hurt? Thank you, Rachel. Is the applicant here or their representative who'd like to make a comment?
St. Davenport, nine-twenty-one College Street, swear to tell the truth. Mr. Williams is present on behalf of the developer, too, in case we need him. Your questions are pretty much right on point, what I wanted to point out. I read earlier in the staff report, and Rachel, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think this development predates the zoning ordinance, that the hotel was in place before... Sometime in the fifties, prior to the zoning ordinance going in. So, really, if you look at the aerial, the existing, I really don't know why this isn't already HB, because the structure predated the ordinance. So, I don't really know whether that's a map error, but when the first zoning classifications went in, my understanding is that structure was already there, being used as a motel. So, we are... If it was but for that little strip, we wouldn't even be here tonight. I was asking Mr. Shirley during the last hearing here just a while ago, how far this distance is and how that compares with forty feet, same question y'all were asking. And if you look at the concept, that line is roughly here, and here's the forty-foot setback. It's almost dead-on with it, so it's very close. And I guess the point I want to make tonight is, that forty-foot setback also includes a ten-foot buffer that will be in place if this gets redeveloped. It's not in place today. Neither of those are in place today. If you look at the building, that eve of that building is right here. So, that's way closer than forty feet, probably within the ten-foot buffer. Again, just eyeballing it. So, the only thing I will clarify is, I was not... I did not attend the pre-app meeting in this case. I was brought on afterwards. The intent with the original application actually was four stories. That's why it said forty feet. Rachel mentioned that that change happened when we got the comments. It was actually when I got the comments that my client felt a little uneasy about the forty feet, because there's always a question whether that includes parapet walls and screening on rooftops. And that's why we switched to four stories. So, now, that was a change from the pre-app, from what they thought about doing with the property. If we exclude... I think... I got to talk to Luke, but I think if we exclude parapet walls, HVAC, and other equipment and screening thereof, that you get into kind of a catch-twenty-two if you're not careful with that. Other than that, again, this is, you know, currently, there are no binding elements on the property, so there will be no restrictions of any kind, either use, which we've provided, materials we've provided, or height.
So, everything you say is technically correct, but if you tear this structure down, then all of those setbacks and et cetera come back into play. So, it isn't just wide open. Clearly, they have grandfathered in what they have now, but if they were to rebuild...
Setbacks would come into place, Commissioner Graham. The height restriction...
That is correct.
The use restriction...
That is correct.
The materials restriction would not.
That's correct. Yeah, that's what I was referring to, was the setback on that left side. Clearly, it's not there currently. So, do we have agreement on the forty feet?
I just get... Luke feels safer at fifty feet excluding parapet walls, HVAC, rooftop equipment, and screening.
Do we have an elevation or anything we can look at here?
We don't, Commissioner Graham. I think Luke wants to speak to that.
Yeah, Luke Williams, fourteen-twenty-six Manor Circle, swear to tell the truth. Yeah, so, yeah, we don't, and we really just feel like what we're doing today is just cleaning it up, because if we just shift the building like two feet further in, then we're for sure out of that setback, and we can build as high as we want to build and as wide as we want to build and the building materials and those things. So, we just wanted to kind of clean this up. We don't know how fast we're going to do the storage facility. We've been approached by other, and that's why we're not asking specifically for the storage facility. There's been another investor who's talked to us about maybe doing a medical building there, so that would be in that same height area of... That's why I feel comfortable in that fifty feet. So, we're not here today specifically asking to build self-storage.
I see, okay. So, well, so that kind of brings us back to, we don't know what we're approving here. And in the DPC, number one says architectural metal. There's no percentage, so if you just take number one, somebody could build an entire building out of architectural metal forty feet tall or fifty feet tall.
Mr. Graham, I think they can now.
Yeah, that's the thing.
They can today.
They can build it now.
They can build it now.
At least they're getting something, I think.
Right.
Because right now, you have nothing.
Right.
You're cleaning up... I mean, you're cleaning up the back part...
Just that part, that strip.
Which needs to be done, but really, they can do anything they want.
They can move it two feet in.
So, I'm curious, why don't you just move it two feet in?
Because we wanted to not have that goofy part of it zoned one way, part of it zoned the other, and staff kind of requested that we do this.
Staff didn't request that it be cleaned up, and I guess the issue isn't just the building.
And it's access to the rear.
Yeah, you couldn't do anything with the RM two at all, other than just use it for drainage or green space. So, it's not just the building.
So, the RM two has some value in this proposal, apparently. Okay. So, Mr. Williams, do you have... In your wildest imagination, do you think that anybody's going to build a forty-story architectural metal building there?
Forty-story?
I'm sorry. A fifty-feet-tall architectural metal building there?
I think anything that's built would have... Yeah, if we do the storage and go that direction, Zach can speak on that.
Zach Williams, nineteen-sixty-eight Mount Victor Lane. So, if we were to move forward, and I swear to tell the truth, and if we were to move forward with the storage, we built similar products to this in Florida and then other areas, and with Bowling Green growing as we are, there's a need in this area. And so, our initial intent was to just develop this for storage. But with cost on the rise and interest rates, we decided to pump the brakes on that and see what our options could be. If we were to do that product, no, it would not be one-hundred-percent a metal building. Who we would be building this for is one of the larger self-storage companies, and we would have to have this architecturally pleasing for them. And so, it would have a mix of architectural metals, brick, block, so on and so forth, windows, storefront, and a mixture.
And so, would you have an objection to, for the front facade of this building, the facade that faces the road, to put a percentage limit on the architectural metal?
I'd be okay with that. I'd need to... What percentage would you think? I mean, I would say that...
Say, no more than forty percent? It gives you a lot to work with. You're only talking about the front facade.
Yeah, and that would exclude if we took out the windows and the front and everything.
Correct.
Yeah, I'd be okay with that.
Good, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Commissioners, any other questions for the Williams? All right, thank you. Is there anyone in the audience tonight that has a question regarding this proposal or a comment? Yes, sir? Your name and address, please.
James Norman, eight-forty-one Magnolia Street. My property directly...
You swear to tell the truth, sir?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Norman.
My property at eight-forty-one is directly up against the back, almost, of this proposed development. I'm certainly not opposed to any, you know, any development or expansion, but there's no three- or four-story building in either direction on the bypass for many, many blocks, and I'm a little concerned that the developers haven't stated what the maximum height would be. I guess I hear fifty feet, maybe, but I also heard statements that it could be any height they wished, and given that there are many homes behind this business, and there are no other businesses three or four stories for long distance on the bypass in either direction, it seems a bit out of character to place a really tall business right up against a residential neighborhood.
Thank you, Mr. Norman. I think they have agreed no higher than fifty feet. Is that what we've understood? And I think you've heard from the other commissioners and the staff that this proposal, they could build higher than that, so... Anyone else in the audience would have a comment on this? Thank you, Mr. Norman. Appreciate your comments. Thank you, Mr. Norman, appreciate your comments. So, Hamp, we are going to change...
Number two, correct, goes, will now read, structure shall exceed fifty feet in height.
Excluding, exclusive of... I think the intent was exclusive of on-roof equipment or screening thereof.
So, the parapet would actually be taller than fifty feet?
Would consider, if it was, if it's screening, that would be taller than fifty feet. The idea being fifty feet being the highest part of the top story.
So, are we gonna identify it as parapet, or are we...
What, just as my understanding in a project that we did in other places, if we put air conditioning units in the center of the roof, up on the top, and the, the roof is at forty-seven or forty-eight feet, then that air conditioner now, that's in the center of the roof, that can't be seen by any neighbor or by anybody, still has to be screened.
That's a condition.
That's, that's just a condition.
So, we're identifying it as screening, not parapet walls? Is that a more accurate?
Yes.
I think, I think we're talking six, one half dozen the other, I guess.
Yeah.
So, number two will now read, no structure shall exceed fifty feet in height excluding on-roof screening.
Would work.
We've got number one, I think Hamp, which is the architectural metal?
I think, I think, I'm sorry, Hamp.
No, go ahead.
I think at the end of number one, we can say that architectural metal will be limited to no more than forty percent of the front facade.
The buffer you've referred to a couple of times is not necessary since it's required by the ordinance.
Correct.
Davenport, would you call your applicants up here to agree to these, changing on number one and number two?
Did you hear the limitation of architectural metal on the front facade being limited no more than forty percent?
Yes, and we agree.
And did you hear the height restriction at fifty feet excluding on-roof screening?
Yes, we agree.
Agreed with those?
Yes, sir.
Luke, you represent Cobblestone Capital LLC.
Yes, sir.
Hamp, we got it?
Yes, sir.
All right, thank you, sir. Commissioners, you've heard the changes, and the motion tonight, we'll call for a motion, please.
Make a motion to approve the proposed zoning map amendment together with condition upon the general development plan, document number twenty twenty-two eighty-eight ZBG. Based upon the testimony and documents presented in this public hearing, the proposed zoning map amendment is consistent with the adopted Focus 2030 Comprehensive Plan, as demonstrated by its compliance with the objectives and action items presented in the staff report. Therefore, the proposed zoning map amendment is in agreement with the adopted Comprehensive Plan. Further, I request this motion includes summary of evidence and testimony presented by the witnesses at this public hearing.
Commissioner Graham.
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Vitale. Commissioner Volker. Commissioner Drain. Commissioner Gay.
Ma'am.
And Chair Warren.
Yes, ma'am. The motion has been approved, and will go to the Bowling Green, the Bowling Green City Commission. Our next item tonight is twenty twenty-two eighty-nine ZBG. Sandra Franklin and Nancy Hewland have filed an application to rezone a portion of a tract of land containing approximately two acres for a portion of seventeen forty Greenview Lane off Vine Wood Drive from Ag to RS one A, single-family residential with the general development plan.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Ms. Willoughby.
July, we had a pre-application meeting on July the thirteenth of this year for the property located at seventeen forty Greenview Lane. It is highlighted in yellow. The current zoning of the property is Ag. The current land use of the property is Ag. And the future land use designation for this area is low-density residential. The applicants are again proposing to rezone the two acres located on a portion of the property at seventeen forty Greenview Lane from Ag to RS one A, in order to create an additional building lot. So, moving over to page two to look at the site characteristics, this application does comply with a majority of the items in the site characteristics review. Looking down to the site design and compatibility review, I would just like to point out the building orientation and front building setback. Existing homes are oriented to face public streets. Any new home constructed on the property should face Vine Wood Drive. The applicants did not address building orientation. The concept plan does depict that the proposed residence will be oriented at a roughly forty-five-degree angle towards Vine Wood Drive. Moving over to page three to look at the development plan conditions, number one addresses septic. Number two addresses that the proposed house will have a minimum of two thousand square feet on the first floor. Number three looks at the minimum of a two-car attached garage. Number four deals with access to the property in coordination with Public Works. Number five looks at building materials and their limitations. Number six, well, the subject property will be limited to a single lot, two acres in size. Number seven deals with maximum allowable lot coverage. Number eight looks at any development on the property will be limited to areas outside of any designated wetland. Number nine deals with tree preservation, and number ten deals with sinkhole mitigation. Looking down to the Focus 2030 category review, staff evaluated eighteen, and I would just like to point out a few for your consideration. The proposal may comply with LU two and LU two-point-one. The planning commission should determine if the proposal is a high-quality development that incorporates design standards tailored to protect the existing character and pattern of development in the area. The applicants did agree to a minimum of the sixty percent open space, and so the planning commission should determine if this is adequate and usable of scenic or ecological value, and if the applicant therefore complies with LU two-point-one-point-one. Looking over to page four, the proposal may comply with HM one and HM one-point-three. The planning commission should determine if the proposal is a compatible infill development that will maintain or improve the existing character and pattern of development within the area, and if it will strengthen the residential uses. And then looking down to HM two-point-one and HM four, the proposal may comply if the planning commission determines that the proposed development plan and conditions require that any redevelopment be located in a suitable location, and if it would enhance the array of housing options available in the area. So, looking back to page one with some points to consider, the application complies with the majority of the criteria assessed during the review process, with the considerations noted below regarding building orientation, and the existing homes are oriented to face public streets. The applicants did not address building orientation, and the concept plan does depict that the proposed residence will be oriented at a roughly forty-five-degree angle towards Vine Wood Drive. That is all that staff have, but I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Janie. Commissioners, any questions for Ms. Willoughby? All right, hearing none. Is the applicant here? Any comments? Ms. Hewland, would you like to make any comments? All right, thank, thank you for being here tonight. Huh?
Do you have a question?
Okay, well, thank you for being here tonight, and Ms. Franklin. Is there anyone in the audience that has a question or a comment regarding this proposal? All right, hearing none, would call for a motion, please.
Make a motion to approve the proposed zoning map amendment together with and condition upon a general development plan, document number twenty twenty-two eighty-nine Z counting, based upon the testimony and documents presented in this public hearing. The proposed zoning map amendment is consistent with the Focus 2030 Comprehensive Plan, as demonstrated by its compliance with the action items presented in the staff report. Therefore, the zoning map amendment is in agreement with the adopted Comprehensive Plan. Further, I request this motion includes a summary of evidence and testimony presented by the witnesses at this public hearing.
Second. Commissioner Gay.
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Graham.
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Vitale.
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Volker.
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Drain. Chair Warren.
Yes, ma'am. The motion is approved, and will go to the Bowling Green City Commission for final approval. Our next item tonight is twenty twenty-two ninety ZBG. LHMW Holdings Two, care of Mark Williams, has filed an application to rezone a portion of land containing approximately eighteen-point-two acres located zero Russellville Road from Ag to RM three Townhouse Multi-Family Residential with the general development plan. Ms. Hurt.
Thank you, Chair Warren. We had a pre-application meeting back in August for this property outlined in yellow, located on Russellville Road. The current zoning is Ag, and the current use is also Ag. The future land use designation is mixed-use residential. And the proposal involves a request to rezone the property to RM three for up to two hundred and fifty-four units on the property. There is a revised site plan on the PowerPoint, so this looks slightly different from what was included in your packet. The main difference being the location of the parking up front. There previously included a proposal for parking in front of the office building here, or the clubhouse building, and the setback along Russellville Road, and that was one of the points to consider in your packet. However, I believe in speaking with the applicant that they plan to propose a development plan condition, a revision that would reflect the concept that's on the PowerPoint tonight. So, that would alleviate that point to consider. So, I will note that. Also noting, in the site characteristics review, under prime farmland, a majority of the property contains soil types that are designated as prime farmland, and a small portion of the property is designated as farmland of statewide importance. Under the cultural and historical features, you'll see a reference to the Kelly Farm graveyard that is located on the property, and the applicants did address the cemetery and the development plan conditions. I'll touch on that in just a minute. Looking at the density map, you'll see that densities for existing and approved subdivisions in the area range from one-point-five-four to twenty-point-nine dwelling units per acre, and the proposed density is thirteen-point-nine-six dwelling units per acre. Touching on the traffic impact study section of the staff report, KYTC reviewed this proposal, and they did not require a traffic impact study in lieu of the developer installing right and left turn lanes into the development on Russellville Road. And the Bowling Green Public Works Department did not require any improvements. And the applicants did agree to the turn lane requirements and their development plan conditions. We have noted that the property is located within the area of the Walnut Valley Focal Point Plan, and there are a couple of items I will note for your consideration. The first being WV one B, again, with the revised concept on the PowerPoint, and then the anticipated revision to the development plan conditions, this item may no longer be of a concern. On page five, we have referenced a WV two A, which states that residential development should be compatible with adjacent land uses, and that new development should not exceed the overall density of the adjacent development by more than fifty percent. The proposed density for this development is thirteen-point-nine-six. The density for the adjacent spring water development is two-point-nine-nine. The greatest density that was shown on the previous density map that I had displayed is twenty-point-nine dwelling units per acre, and the planning commission should determine compliance with this policy. Looking at the development plan conditions, development plan condition one limits the development to two hundred and fifty-four dwelling units. Number two sets a maximum building height at two stories and requires that all structures be uniform in design and color. Number three outlines permitted building materials for the development. Vinyls shall be allowed in soffits only. Four requires that the development be under singular ownership and management, and five requires lighting to be uniform for parking and travel ways. On page six, the development shall include a clubhouse and pool. Utilities shall be underground. Development plan condition eight addresses sinkholes. Number nine includes those transportation-related requirements for turn lanes. Number ten, again, I believe a revision is proposed for that. The previous proposal included twenty parking spaces in the front building setback along Russellville Road, but now, again, the concept depicts that that has all been shifted behind the building. I'll let the applicant speak to that in just a minute. Number eleven looks at building orientation or screening of side or rear facades along Russellville Road. Number twelve requires that the developer work with the Warren County Cemetery Board to locate and preserve the cemetery that's located on the property. And additionally, the perimeter of any cemetery shall be fenced and maintained, and the developer shall leave a twenty-foot no-build buffer around the cemetery. Thirteen requires a minimum of thirty percent open space. Fourteen requires that the developer make reasonable efforts to maintain healthy and mature trees existing within ten feet of the property lines. Fifteen requires that at least fifty percent of the developments required parking be located behind the front building line. And sixteen requires that there be sidewalks throughout the development of no less than three feet in width, which will serve all building units, exclusive of the townhome-style buildings, and that the boulevard, sorry, exclusive of the townhome-style buildings, the boulevard entrance, clubhouse, and pool, and further, the sidewalks shall connect to the existing sidewalks on Green Ash Drive, which is the street to the rear on your concept plan. Under the Focus 2030 category review, there are nine items for your consideration, the first being LU one-point-one-point-three, which looks at compatibility. Next, LU two, the planning commission should determine if their proposal is a high-quality development that will preserve the character of the area. Next, LU two-point-one-point-one, which looks at open space. And then on page seven, we have LU two-eight and LU two-eight-one, which are in reference to the Walnut Valley Focal Point Plan. And then down at the bottom there, we have HM one and HM one-point-three, which look at the character of the area, and HM two-point-one and HM four, which look at suitability of the proposed development and housing options in the area. Jumping to page one, we'll look at our points to consider. Again, I had noted that a majority of the property is designated as prime farmland, and then below that, we have a point to consider about the location of the parking being in the setback. But if the applicant revises their development plan conditions as I'm anticipating to match this concept, then that would no longer be a point to consider. That is all for the staff report, but I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Hurt. Commissioners, are there any questions regarding this proposal tonight? Hearing none. All right, thank you. Is the applicant here, or the representative?
Davenport, nine twenty-one College, swear to tell the truth. Mr. Williams is with me also. Mr. Brian Shirley, the engineer's here. And let me thank Brian. He either requested and/or demanded, depending upon your perspective, that he played a little Tetris to try to get this Walnut Valley Focal Point complied with, and I'm talking about the parking. So, being in the Walnut Valley Focal Point, you're supposed to try to do two things, and that is have no more than fifty percent of your, your parking behind your first structure, and none of your parking within the front building setback. So, originally, we weren't able to meet that second requirement, but like I said, he played Tetris and did whatever engineers do, and figured out how to make that work. So, I'll have Mr. Williams swear to that change in just a minute. Other than that, again, I'll point out our density's thirteen-something. We've got twenty-something, I think, immediately adjacent to this, one of the properties. If you look at that density map, I think about half the densities the staff noted are higher than our density. So, I think the application, at least from my perspective, is well-received. They've taken care of the cemetery. They've met those Walnut Valley, Walnut Valley focal points, which Ben knows I complain about those every time we do something on Russellville Road, but I'll just keep complaining.
So, you're saying you can comply with them if you try?
Sometimes, sometimes. Well, again, I didn't do it. Brian Shirley did it. I'll give all the, all the, all that goes to him. The only other thing I think Hamp, when I was, when Rachel was talking, I noticed this number sixteen that I did, I've got probably a half dozen grammar instructors that'd be ashamed if they saw that, that I drafted that. And I think, I think the comma after building units needs to come out, and I think we need to put in parentheses, exclusive of townhome-style buildings, close that parentheses, and then put a comma, because I think that makes a lot more sense if we do it that way. The way it's written, it's not entirely clear what we're excluding. So, the intent being that the sidewalks will serve the boulevard entrance, the clubhouse and the pool, as well as all building units exclusive of the townhomes. And if you look on the concept, you can see the sidewalks kind of don't cross the parking areas into these townhomes. So, unless you disagree, Hamp, I think that makes more sense. So, it would read, there shall be sidewalks throughout the development of no less than three feet in width, comma, which will serve all building units, strike that comma, open per inch, exclusive of townhome-style buildings, close per inch, comma, and the rest would be the same.
So, the sidewalks are gonna serve the boulevard entrance, the clubhouse, and the pool?
Correct. I think the way I wrote it, it makes hardly no sense. I think the way I wrote it, it makes hardly no sense what I'm saying there, so. And I think that's why Rachel kind of hesitated when she read it. I don't blame her.
Mr. Davenport, Commissioners, any questions for Mr. Davenport, or his applicant, Mr. Williams is here?
So, Chris, I think you're prepared to make the change. Which DPC will we be changing to address the parking?
Parking, I want to change number two, or excuse me, number 10. Number 10. Number 10 will read, just strike all number 10 to be a do number 10. "No parking shall be allowed within the front building setback along Russellville Road." And then we'll make that grammatical change to number 16 with the paren's. And if y'all are ready, I'll let you swear Mr. Williams in. I'll ask him.
Well, we need to see if there's anyone in the audience tonight before Mr. Davenport. Is there anyone in the audience tonight that has a question regarding this or a comment? Yes, sir, if you would come to the microphone, please, sir?
Roger Watwood, 53, 49 Amber Creek Lane, Spring Water Subdivision.
Swear to tell the truth. What was your first, last name?
Watwood, W-A-T-W-O-O-D.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Does this develop, are you gonna, are they gonna leave the existing tree line that surrounds that property? That's the only thing separating it and my backyard.
We address that in number 14.
In development plan condition 14, the developer agreed to make reasonable efforts to maintain healthy and mature trees existing within 10 feet of the development's property lines.
Will there be any fencing between my house on the plot up there is the fourth house down from the corner? Is there access into our subdivision from this development?
There is.
Looks like there's a stub street on the plat. I'm not sure there's a.
There is a stub street, and the lady that owns the corner house that backs up to that is here as well.
But is there a street on the other side?
I don't have the pointer. And Brian may speak to this, but yes, there is a connection proposed with the stub street here.
Our subdivision is, unless the other road is connected out to Russellville Road, there's way too much traffic coming into that subdivision on John Jones Road off Russellville Road. It will be a nightmare with that many units.
So we cannot address, and we cannot make decisions.
Christian, pull your mic down, please, sir.
We cannot address the stub street. That is not something we can do. That's something you probably have to have conversation with transportation about.
So Mr. Watwood, just a real brief, this comes up all the time. There's a requirement in the comprehensive plan that all properties have stub streets. I assume this is a required stub street? Is that correct?
The stub street from their neighborhood was required when it was developed. For the purposes of future connectivity when the adjacent parcel develops.
And so this developer is required to connect to that stub street? Is that correct?
Well, it's not a, it's not a street, but they are proposing to tie in with that to provide an additional means of ingress and egress. That way, if the front entrance on Russellville Road was blocked for some reason, and if there was an emergency, that would allow vehicles to get in and out through a second entrance.
You're addressing, it is a safety issue and.
It's creating another safety issue with our, within our subdivision. There's only one entrance in and out for 103 lots in the original development.
So as Commissioner Volker stated, we don't have the ability to remove that. You could petition the fiscal court, but it's not something that we have the ability to do.
Who would I, who would I call to check on that?
This, if this item is approved by this board tonight, it will go to the Bowling Green City Commission for final approval.
So strike that, not the fiscal court.
It will go to the city commission, and so the city commission could override this request tonight.
Is there any privacy fencing or bordering the property with, next to the subdivision?
We don't have any DPCs for that. They've not been presented.
And there's no requirement for fencing between this property and a residential?
That's correct. There's a screening buffering requirement in the ordinance. A fence is one option the applicant could choose if this were to move forward and the property is developed, shown, as shown on the concept. A privacy fence would be an option, but it's not a requirement.
Okay, how would I find out when is the next, or when this comes before the commission, city commission?
So our next regularly scheduled meeting is November 17th, where the minutes would be approved from this meeting. Then the recommendations go to the city clerk, who then they set their own agenda. So most likely, it would be on the first Tuesday in December. And I'd have to look that up.
Okay, well, I guess I can call City Hall and ask. Okay, all right, thank you.
City Commission, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Watwood. Is there anyone else in the audience tonight has a comment that's different than the traffic or the screening? Yes, ma'am. If you would come, if you need to come to the microphone, please, and we swear you in. Yes, ma'am, your name and address, please.
My name is Joanne Taber. I lived at 5337 Amber Creek Lane. My house is the corner.
You swear to tell the truth, Ms. Taber. Thank you.
My house is that corner house where the road is stubbed in. And the first time I knew anything about this, I saw the sign practically in my backyard. But I have a little something I'd like to read to you all about my home.
Ms. Taber, you have three minutes, okay?
Okay, okay. As I just told you, the notice said that anybody that owned property within 200 foot of this new project were given this notice. And actually, we're more than 200 feet. We join this new proposed property. And the street beside me was a dead-end street, which will be open to traffic from this development, right beside my bedroom, with multiple traffic day and night. Now, there's only one entrance to our subdivision off Russellville Road, and we have to try to enter Russellville Road between cars, trucks, traveling at excessive speed, and that is a nightmare. I'm not here to try to stop progress. I'm here to ask that you help me and my neighbors protect our property value and our privacy as homeowners. Some of us are retired people, and we've worked all our lives to pay for our homes. I bought my lot, number 111, because of its natural beauty, being a tree-lined buffer on the property line. There was also an open field used as a cornfield between my lot and Russellville Road. It was a quiet, peaceful corner lot. We are asking this tree-line buffer to not be removed. Our backyards join this property. We will be exposed to multiple apartments, people, and bright lights like a football field. We will also have to endure the construction noise and the traffic for months, maybe a year or so. I would like to request, my neighbors and I ask you to please consider our request to keep the tree-line buffer at the back of our homes. If it is removed, that you replace it with trees that give privacy and will buffer the noise. We thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Taber. I think one of the development plan conditions, I think the applicants can address this, is they will preserve all tree lines, and the applicant, the lighting will be shoebox-style coming down. So if, let me ask, is there anybody else? Thank you, Ms. Taber and Mr. Watwood. Thank you for being here tonight and your comments. Thank you very much. Is there anyone else tonight in the audience has a question regarding this proposal? All right, hearing none. Mr. Davenport?
Ask a question of staff. I want to make sure I'm right about this. We used to include an element or a condition that, that light would be faced downward to minimize trespass. Is that not now in the ordinance already?
That's a requirement of the ordinance, that any lighting on the property be directed downward and inward so that light does not trespass onto adjacent neighboring properties. And there's also restrictions on the level of lighting as far as the measurement of the foot candles and how bright it can be at the property line and things like that.
But my impression was I have not included that for a long time, because I think that's one of those things you all asked me to quit putting in because it was already required. The only thing I'll add to that is, I think Mr. Shirley's concept here, I mean, we don't, I didn't point it out, but if you look where the townhomes are situated, if you look where the parking is situated, light primarily comes with the parking areas. Parking areas here on the interior of the property. And so the concept itself, I think, is kind of, it's baked into the cake here to minimize that as well, because the parking areas and the light that comes with it are to the interior of the property. Both the gentleman and the lady that just spoke, their properties will be shielded from those parking areas by the townhomes. The other point I'll make, I think it makes sense always to put the townhomes between the single-family residences when you can. It's kind of a gradient, if you will, between the intensity of the two uses. So you have more dense development towards the middle. You're buffering your own development somewhat from the, I would say, probably four single-family homes we're talking about there.
Mr. Davenport, to the, to Ms. Taber's question, development plan number 14, the developer will make all reasonable efforts to maintain healthy and mature trees with existing within 10 feet of the development property lines.
It's all the property lines, not just the line in common with the gentleman or the lady.
Right. Thank you.
You know, I could talk to Mr. Williams about that, Ms. Drane.
Chris, here's what I think. I mean, obviously, it can be a very nice development. I mean, and y'all, y'all have done some great things in here. I mean, adding a fence from the corner just in the back, behind the houses, not all the way around, just to give some privacy from the townhome, the back of the townhomes to the backyards of the houses.
I guess the issue, are you okay with that?
I'm fine.
It's not a security, it's not a security issue.
I just, you all have heard me, the concern I have with that from his perspective, and I mean, it's easy to agree to. It's not, it's not burdensome. The question does become where you put it. Do you put it on the outside of that buffer? Do you put it on the inside of the buffer? A lot of times, the fence on the inside of the buffer doesn't really make much sense to me because you've got these mature trees in your. But you got to remove some vegetation to get that fence in.
So that's where I was going to go. I like it on the outside, but I think, I think the, probably Ms. Taber and Mr. Watwood have got to realize that if they're going to put a fence in, that means that they're going to be taking out trees to put the fence in. So I think we got to ask ourselves, which one of those do we want? Because if there's a, if there's a tree there, you can't put a fence there, right? Okay, so if that's the case, I think Mr. Davenport's current development plan condition addresses your concern, and also the other concern, I think, is addressed, even though it's not stated here, is your request about lighting is addressed here as well. So my view, we leave the, we leave the fence out and favor the vegetation.
Thank you, Mr. Davenport. Is there any other comments from the audience tonight? Mr. Williams, appreciate you being here. Commissioners, no other comments. Would call for a motion, please?
Make a motion to approve the proposed zoning map amendment together with a condition upon a general development plan, document number 2022-90ZBG, based upon testimony presented in this public hearing. The proposed zoning map amendment is consistent with adopted Focus 2030 comprehensive plan. It's demonstrated by its compliance with the objective and action items presented in the staff report. Therefore, the proposed zoning map amendment is in agreement with the adopted comprehensive plan. Further requests, this motion includes a summary of evidence and testimony presented by the witnesses at this public hearing.
Commissioner Gay.
Ma'am.
Commissioner Graham.
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Vitale.
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Volker. Commissioner Drane, Chair Warren.
Yes, ma'am. The motion is approved and goes to the Bowling Green City Commission for final approval. Our next four items are, will be read in one, one item here, and then we will call for a motion after the applicants have spoken on these four items. 2022-71Z County Jeremy Lee and Deidra, Renee Carroll, Christopher S. and Carol Chandler, and the City-County Planning Commission have filed an application to rezone portions of tract of land containing approximately two-thirds of an acre located 2222 Murphy Road and 3881 Aaron Road from agriculture to RE residential state, from RE residential state to agriculture. 2022-72Z County Chad and Leona Morlock and the City-County Planning Commission have filed an application to rezone a portion of a tract of land containing approximately one-quarter of an acre located 520 Hillwood Drive from agriculture to RE residential state. 2022-85Z County Richard Joseph and Mary Lee Bissett, Phyllis Bissett Estate, care of Rick Bissett, Ronnie Ward, and the City-County Planning Commission have filed an application to rezone portions of a tract of land containing approximately three-quarter, one-third of an acre located 681 and 701 Hydro Ponsville Road from RE residential state to agriculture, to agriculture, and from agriculture to RE residential estate. 2022-87Z County Joel A. and Jackie A. Hawkins, Justin and Jessica Moore, and the City-County Planning Commission have filed an application to rezone portions of a tract of land containing approximately three-quarters of an acre located at 589 Ben T. Johns Road from RE residential state to agriculture and from agriculture to RE residential estate. Do we have?
I'll just give a brief summary. I think these are instances where the plat is already recorded. It's more of a housekeeping item than anything. In some instances, there were property swaps happening where it was leaving things split-zoned, or someone was just carving off a sliver of their property to add to their neighbor. So in all four of these cases, there aren't any new lots that are being proposed. Nothing is changing about the external appearance, about, about the external appearance of any of these properties. It's truly just a cleanup to where currently, these properties are split-zoned, and the goal of this cleanup is to where all of these properties will have one zoning classification for each property.
Thank you, Ms. Hurt. Is there anyone in the audience that has a question tonight regarding these changes or a comment? Thank you. Commissioners, would call for a motion. Let's just call for a motion to approve all four as presented.
Motion to approve all four as presented.
Commissioner Gay.
Ma'am.
Commissioner Graham.
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Vitale. Commissioner Volker. Commissioner Drane. And Chair Warren.
Ma'am, all four motions approved, and all four will go to the Warren County Fiscal Court for final approval. Any new business tonight, Mr. Peterson? Any discussion items, commissioners? Our next meeting will be November 17th, and it's going to be a long meeting, right, Rachel?
It's everybody, right?
Yeah, and a lot of items. So commissioners, thank you all for being here tonight. Staff, thank you all for all you do. Mr. Moore, thank you.